Order for Watertown City, oh, are we ready to go online? Okay, sorry. Call the order for Watertown City Council meeting for May 20th of 2024. Please rise while Councilman Shuddy leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for always this new day that you've given us as we gather here in the, in the center of this city, the decisions to be made. We just ask for your wisdom, Lord, those who are going to partake, to share, to communicate. I pray that everything gets brought to, brought to the surface that we need to know, to understand, to make wise decisions and, and just your guidance in this, the wisdom that you give us in these positions that we are in. And there's many positions, Lord, in this city, in the city staff that, that are here to serve this community in so many ways. We just pray a, just a covering over each one, a blessing over each one of the, the city staff that, that are here in the city, that are making the city work and move and, and move forward, Father. So we just pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Jerrans?
Here.
Peters? Absent. Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Bueller? Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to open forum. If there is anyone here who would like to discuss something in front of the council that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. I'll close open forum and we will go straight to item nine A. Is an approval of a bid award for the 2024 pickleball facility to Timmins Construction Incorporated in, in the amount of $526,282 and two cents. We'll go to our Public Works Director Heath Von I or Assistant or City Manager Mac. Would you like to lead it off? City, City Manager Mac.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in front of you tonight is the bid award for the pickleball facility, a project that's been in the works for quite some time. We, the low bid was 526,000 roughly, which was just a little bit over the engineer's estimate of 476,000. This facility will be an eight court complex, which will be located on the east side of Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. It'll include the courts, perimeter fencing, and a shade structure. The Watertown Pickleball Association has been working pretty closely with our park and rec department and has raised some substantial dollars to help contribute to this project. So we're recommending that, that 526,000 be split, be split evenly between the city and the pickleball association. There is an agreement or a commitment letter, excuse me, that was attached to the agenda. Myself, Dusty Heath, Justin or Craig, I don't think Craig's here, will stand by for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Did you want either Director Von I or Director Rodick to say anything?
If they'd like to, this is your kid.
I'll open it up if you want to say something.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Really, the only thing I just wanted to communicate is I just like to thank the pickleball association for all their hard work in fundraising for this project.
Thank you very much. I don't need to do this because this doesn't have to be a public for, or an open public debate, but I do know that there are people from pickleball here and I would like to give them the opportunity to come forward and speak and then also be ready to answer some questions if you would like to. But would love to have you come and speak. Just please identify yourself and the group.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dan O'Neill. I'm a member of the Watertown Pickleball Association and have been since the inception of the 501(c)(3). I would like to state that in the regards to the bid package, Timmins has submitted in the city council appears ready to approve, that that bid cap, package was basically for a bare bones facility. There are aspects of that bid that are, that do not contain items that the Watertown Pickleball Association felt were essential for that court to be a success up there by the rec center. Those items that are missing currently, I would like to encourage the cities that when the initial budget request for the pickleball courts of, was created was for $450,000 and the pickleball association has committed and will commit always to supply to the building of those courts, all the money that was donated to our association for those courts to occur. But those items that are missing from the spec, missing from the bid are very important for those, those courts to be a success. And some of those items are wind screening on those courts. That was always part. In fact, the mammoth bid had part of the complex being screened. Other parts were not. There were some things missed in the original mammoth spec sheet that then was incorporated into the bid package that went out that Timmins approved. We've talked to a number of people about having water and the possibility of sewer or bathrooms available. I don't know if the association or the city is prepared to assume the cost for an entire bathroom buildup there, but I think having a water fountain or something that if we decided to have a tournament or some other achieve, we could have water available at the courts. And even though we never put lighting into the request initially because of the huge costs that Mammoth supplied to the city back in early February, there are still aspects of lighting that could be incorporated into these new courts, specifically on the two court complex that's part of the overall eight court complex being built. So the wind screens, water, lighting are not part of this original bid that Timmins has submitted to the city. And I would like to encourage the city, I know I've talked to Dusty about that, to incorporate those additional items in, as part of the city's original budgeted request for the parking wreck of 450,000. So just want to bring that forward to the city and the city council for consideration. So.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify before we open it up for council action and debate? All right. I need a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Tupper? Seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Let's open it up for discussion and questions and comments. Councilman Tupper.
So, uh, thank you for your comments, by the way. How did we inadvertently leave those out of the specs? I don't know who wants to answer that or if they're, were they in the original specs or weren't in the original specs or? Director Rodick?
Thank you. Those items were not included in the original mammoth price. Prior to putting this project out for bid, I had actually reached out to Mammoth to supply pricing for those items. I do agree that water, you know, drinking fountain at that facility would be reasonable. You know, potentially, you know, stub in some electrical, but really, you know, a drinking fountain. I was, I was requesting Mammoth's supply that when we decided to go to bid in order to, we kind of tried to fast track this to hopefully get good qualified bids, you know, much like, you know, Brookings had got, and we wanted to try and time this so we could have construction in 2024.
Any follow-up, Councilman?
Could that be something that's added with an addendum or however, whatever you want to call it?
I do believe that can be added with a change order.
Change order, yep. I guess that's what I was looking for, that and any of the fencing or the screening or anything?
The screening, again, that was in Mammoth's kind of. It wasn't necessarily identified as a line item either in our, ours or the Brookings plan. That's relatively inexpensive, you know, should be roughly $10,000 to supply the, you know, wind screening for that court system.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I concur with what Dan had mentioned earlier, you know, there, the spirit and intent all along, I think, for the pickleball association was to potentially light that, but wind screening, I think, is essential for this project. And I think all the way around, because hell, I just played this morning and the wind came from three different directions. So, you know, that I think would be really important to make it playable. If you've never done it in the wind, it's tough, but it's tough for me anyway. But water, I think, would be essential, especially like he's mentioned earlier too, the, the tournament issue, some sort of a restroom provision, you know, whether it be satellites, something, I don't know. But I do absolutely believe we need to have electricity on that, in, on that facility. You know, you probably won't believe this, but I used to play tennis a lot and we used to play over by the high school and put the quarters in so we could get, you know, the lights to go on. And we played, there was a lot of folks played at night. And I think that would be also an essential item to have for this project. Now, before you say anything, just the $450,000, I think everybody on the pickleball association was under the impression that that $450,000 bucks was there for the project and we got a lower bid and then we cut it back. Now, my question is, do we, maybe you have this in writing, but I'd like to see what we have in writing that supports that. You would cut that back if that bid dropped down from the original estimate. That was an estimate. So if you could expound on that.
Actually, Director, just a moment. Councilman Bueller, I have a question that I think other people might have as well. So if you were to prioritize the add-ons, because you had windscreen, water, 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 sewer, lighting, and what am I missing?
We had, we had lighting, wind screening, water, potentially some sort of a restroom provision and windscreen.
And if you were to prioritize those, one, two, three, what would you say?
Well, I don't want to speak for the whole Watertown Pickleball Association, but for me, it'd be water, you know? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. No, the, I think, I think the wind screening would have to be, I think that'd be a really important provision. Water would be really nice to have there at the facility. And, you know, we do that with a lot of the other facilities we, we build. We put water in it. We have water available to them. But I'd say the screening, the water, and then probably the, the electrical, you know? And if nothing else, if we're able to stub in for electricity, so we had that provision in place to, to put that in later, at the very least, that's my.
Thank you, Councilman. And then back to you, Director Rodick. Do you remember the question?
I do not.
It was in regards to what, what agreement do we have in writing and what does it say?
I, I have done.
As far as like the price?
Sure. I, I've done a lot of these projects. When I got here, one of the first things, you know, it was a fundraising pamphlet that the pickleball association is, and in that they were, you know, initially going to look for donations for the entire thing. Obviously, it was been a challenging fundraising environment with the hockey arena and everything else. So at some point in time, we had talked about, okay, you know, it looked like this was going to come in right around that 850 mark last year. You know, we said, okay, we would hope to maybe get this project started last year when we didn't in the 2024 budget. It was decided that during the, the budget hearings, it was discussed that we would put $450,000 towards the project, thinking it was going to be at a higher dollar value. That's where that came, so.
Mayor, if I might, could you follow up? Thank you. You know, I, I do recall a couple of years back when there were, the intention was to redo Nelson Park's surface. And your predecessor, prior to that, made it sound to everybody at the Watertown Pickle Association like they were going to have, they had monies that were available to do that. That never, I don't believe that was done and maybe you still have plans to do that. But as far as the pickleball players go, they were intending on getting that money transferred to this, and that's what we were told would happen.
That.
I, I got that myself. And so there was some money and I, I want to say it was around $300,000. I, I might be wrong on that total, but I know there was money that was available before we actually were looking for additional dollars.
Okay. When I got here, I'm just can only base on, you know, when I got here, there was approximately, I want to say $110,000 dedicated to, towards the, the Nelson Court. I could be off a little bit, but it's in that neighborhood. Those dollars in '23, when we had talked about maybe trying to get this project pushed forward, I said, okay, we will forego doing the Nelson Courts, but we will carry that towards these courts. Well, when that didn't happen, those dollars just got incorporated into that $450,000 budget line. So in a sense, they did get carried forward into this 450,000.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, you know, we built a $26.5 million wellness center and we certainly didn't take many shortcuts there. I, you know, 30, $36 million ice arena, we didn't take shortcuts there. And I think it would behoove us to take shortcuts on this project. I think those other amenities are important, especially for tournaments and just especially for play. And the sport's growing and growing and growing. And we'd certainly like to get more people to, to be involved with the sport, so.
I would, I would agree. I'm not in favor of taking shortcuts and I would advocate for the water, subbing in the electricity, you know, and certainly the wind screens.
Any follow-up? Councilman? And I'll go over to Councilman Danforth, but first a question, Director Rodick, because you've been the point person in contact with the pickleball association, have you not?
I have.
In discussing some of these additional features, was it proposed to possibly continue the split? If these were to be included or added on in an addendum, was there any discussion that the city would continue to split the cost with the association?
Again, that was all going to be based on what the council decided. I didn't think it was unreasonable for the city to pick up, you know, some of those things depending on cost.
Okay.
You know, at the council's pleasure.
Okay, thank you. I just had that question, so sorry about that, Councilman Danforth. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Here's, I don't know, I don't know, I've never been a part of any of the discussions here, but it, my interpretation of how we got to the 450 was that the estimated cost of the project, as it was defined at some point, was pushing $900,000. And so a cost share puts us in at $450,000. And so now if it's 526, to me, that logic of cost share stays the same. But what I think we ought to do is we ought to define, these items are the same ones that have been referenced here, that, that Mr. O'Neill and Councilman Bueller have talked about, those are the items I had down that I think should at least, we should at least, we should approve the current bid and we should look at these items to see what the costs would be on a line item by line item basis. And I believe that what we should do, and I'm not talking about the city, I'm talking about both parties, because we've planned for an approximate $900,000 project. So we can look at this and whatever we add goes into a cost share, again, up to our maximum of the $450,000. But the pickleball association doing their side of that as well, meaning it's a match as we go from wherever we're at today, 526 or whatever that number is. If we get to 800, we all throw, both throw 400 into it or whatever that number is. But I think it's hard to have this discussion when we have no idea what the costs are here. And so where I'm at is I think we should look at those things and see what they are so we can prioritize them based on, well, based on need and then based on cost. And then we could add them back in as an alternate or, or change order or whatever.
Or it could be an independent bid. That may be more cost effective than including it as a change order.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to run electrical there, well, if you put lights in, you're going to already have electrical there. So if we have a fountain there, do we have to have that connected to a sewer or does that just go into the ground? What does that do?
I believe City Engineer Peterson has some figures on that and I do believe that's going to be required.
To go to the, to the?
Yep.
Right. So now we're?
I was hoping to do like a French drain or something like that, but I don't know that that's, I can get away with that.
You were hoping to do a what?
A French drain.
Dig a hole, put some P rock in it and let it rain and?
Well, that's what I learned tonight, okay.
Go ahead and do that. Anyway, I think we need to look at and say, okay, what would our plan be? What would we ideally want? And what are the associated costs? Best way to do it and see how we, what between the two entities, how we can build back up to get to, because I do believe in the end, we're going to get to all this at some point. We are. And if we're going to, let's see what we got for, we've planned to that approximate 900,000 between the two of us and an approximate 50% cost share, you know? And so let's work our way to that, see what we can get with these items. That's my opinion.
City Manager Mac, you had something to say?
Thank you, Mayor. We sent out almost a year ago, so June of '23, there was a funding plan that was sent out that included, so about $10,000 budget for the drinking fountain, $10,000 for the windscreen, another $20,000 for water and electric service to the site. So we're looking at anywhere from 40,000 to 50,000 to do those things. Nowhere on any of the plans do we have anything related to bathrooms or permanent bathrooms. That was, to the best of my recollection, not part of the discussion. So I, just to get back to the, the recommendation, you know, our recommendation is to approve the, the bid award and to approve the agreement or commitment letter from the pickleball association and change order in these other items that weren't part of it, just like you said.
Councilman Danforth?
As part of this discussion, I read the letter from the pickleball association. Is, is the content of that part of this discussion we should be having or not?
I believe so.
Okay. Because I know it was referenced in there about naming rights. And I personally, I, I disagree with that. And the reason why I do is we have a lot of associations, athletic associations, that have put tons of money into facilities without naming the facilities. They might have a banner or a sign that says contributions from, but we haven't named facilities for associations that have raised a lot of money over the years. And I would highly recommend that we not make that precedent with this issue, with this item.
Follow-up on that is, I think, just to make sure, has that been done before? I'm not aware of it ever being done before. And is that the request? City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, we do have some facilities where we've done naming rights, the ice arena, the wellness center. You all did adopt a policy back in November related to donations and naming rights. So if you so choose to do that, you can. But that's really, it's up to you and what your, what your preference for that is. Some of the criteria, so items eligible to be named are parks, buildings, structures, unique monuments, gardens, landscaped areas, trails and pathway systems, ponds or bodies of water, municipal streets. Let's see here. Recognition of a donor, a donor who significantly supported a public space or improvement, a non-donor who exemplified public stewardship or where appropriate to generate revenue or secure donations from private sources to defer a portion or entirety of the costs of the space or improvement. So you do have a path to do it if you so desire. It doesn't mean that it is a requirement or that you must do it.
Councilman Bueller?
Thanks again, Mayor. Just what I'd like to see us do, I would like to see us, I think we can simplify this by taking those three priority items, which I believe is lighting, wind screening, and water. And the city pick up the tab on top of the half that they're proposing right now. So what additional costs we would incur for those three items, the city would pay for that. And I believe that's going to be way under the $450,000 that was originally proposed to do that. And then we have that. Those folks have worked really hard on the Watertown Pickleball Association to raise money and it's been a, it's been an experience for those folks for, for a few years now. And so I'd like to see us do that. That would be my recommendation. And then if I might, Mayor, Dan, could I, would you mind coming up one more time?
Please. While he's on his way, would you be okay if City Manager Mac says something she?
No, no, I would not.
I just have a question. We've talked about electrical and we've talked about lighting and those are two different things. So I want to make sure we're clear because stubbing in the electrical allows for lighting in the future, but are you, because I don't think we have a number on what it's going to cost to light that thing.
Well, I'm proposing lighting for that facility. So, and at the very least, if we didn't want to do that, I would say to stub it in, but we're still, you know, if we do it two, three years from now, it's going to probably cost twice as much to do it. But Dan, I just, the question I have for you is, what were you, what was your expectations for naming rights?
Mr. O'Neill?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Naming rights isn't, is a, is?
Excuse, thank you, thank you, Dusty. Naming rights, really, we were basing that concept on just the amount of money donated to a project based on kind of the historical citywide process where an organization gives a tremendous amount of money to build either the ice arena and we're talking about a 50% ratio here basically, or maybe even, you know, 60/40 where the city is. So I mean, as, based on that, we were looking at, we also had some significant donors to the association for the building of the courts. We'd like to have something either in a net, which is fairly common to put a sponsor's name on a net or a court that was very significant to us. I don't think the association was looking at our name on the courts in conjunction with other large donors who made this whole project possible for the city. So do we need to have our name emblazoned in lights? No, I don't think that's what we're, Watertown Pickleball Association is looking for. We would like to have either on a net, which really isn't a significant expense, or possibly on a windscreen along with other associated large donors that have contributed to the project as a possibility. How the courts will be named in the future throughout the city or in the pickleball universe, I mean, that's, I expect they will just be called the Watertown Pickleball Courts. I mean, I don't think they're going to be, they're not going to be preference before or after with the Pickleball Association. I think they'll just be referred to as the Watertown Pickleball Court. So, I mean, obviously the city will have the ultimate name for the courts. I mean, so we're not looking for some big grand entrance emblazoned anywhere on the courts, but if you, I don't know if that, hopefully that answers your question.
Director Roddick, did you have something to add?
I was just going to mention, you know, the naming rights would be, in my mind, slightly different than donor recognition. You know, I think donor recognition would be appropriate for their larger donors on, let's say, you know, they've got eight different courts, to, you know, recognize the donors in that way as opposed to a full naming right for the facility.
Thank you. Councilman Tupper?
I would agree with Director Roddick. That was kind of my idea, instead of putting it on a net, which is not going to be permanent, you know, eventually the net's going to have to be replaced, to build a donor's wall would be kind of a enshrine, put it that way, for generations to come. That would be my idea. As far as naming right for the park itself, I can never remember that us ever doing that other than Lions Park, which I believe pretty much the entire amount of that, when they did that, was from the local Lions Club. So I think that's the only reason that actually came to fruition is because of their, I don't think the city put in hardly anything on that project, but naming rights, yeah, I'd have to agree with Councilman Danforth on that, so.
All right. Council, Councilman Dan, anyone like to speak before Councilman Danforth speaks again?
Good luck.
Just, I should have, I should have given Councilman Shuddy and Jurens a chance before, but Councilman Danforth, sorry.
And I'm going to ask a rhetorical question here, but what would, where would we be right now on a cost share if this was an $850,000 project that we, that we didn't get the 526? Where would we be? We know that we committed 450. What was the expectation in that scenario, Mr. O'Neil, for the Pickleball Association?
387,000. We were told by the city when the initial Mammoth bid came in the first week of February at 837,000 that the city would commit 450 and the Watertown Pickleball Association had to make up the difference of 387,000.
So what's that ratio?
About a 60.
60/40, somewhere in there.
To me, that's, that's, to me, if that's what was understood and agreed to, whatever that ratio is, seems appropriate to follow that ratio on any additional expenses that go in there. Up to the city's, you know, max commitment of the 450,000. And that just seems appropriate. We planned on that anyway. And we got a favorable bid, so it seems to me we'd follow the logic of what was intended with a higher cost. And if that, that to me seems more tolerable all around, certainly from this side of the table, than just to say the city pays all of that. Councilman Beeler, I'd like the idea of getting it done. I disagree with the fact that the city foots all that. I think we, we had a plan, we had a approximate dollar or ratio of how we cost shared that. To me, that should follow the project up to the point at which we have funds. And we prioritize based on the costs of these items that we have discussed.
If I may add a comment to that, you know, it would be consistent with what Councilman Danforth has said. Roughly the ratio at that point, if I did my math right, was, you know, essentially 46% to, you know, 54%. Depending on the range of the improvements that, over and above this bid that we're talking about, it would be, because I kind of did some quick calculations before the meeting, and it would be in that probably 55%, 55 to 45% ratio, so we're in the ballpark.
It's 45/55, based on the numbers you have here.
Councilman, anything else?
No, and I, I will say, Mr. O'Neil, I think, I think that the use in the letter of the term naming rights is probably, we're interpreting that differently than what your intent is. As you've described it, I would certainly welcome that. We do that with all of our other associations. We afford signage, various signage at that city asset, you know, for them to raise funds for their programs and we do that at baseball fields, softball fields, whatever. So I think that's probably more in line with what you're saying, recognition of donors and then signage and stuff. So it's really more of a signage?
Sure.
Issue than a naming rights issue.
Right. Yep. Do it.
Councilman Beeler?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question, Dusty, Mr. Roddick. If we, if, when we came up with the $450,000, I know you had, I think it was $800,000 for projects in the budget, that $450,000, that was, was that before we even knew what the estimate bids were, bid estimates were going to be? Because it seems to me we didn't have bids. Somebody may have thrown an estimate out there, but that, that 450,000, did that happen before that?
And City Manager Mac has something she could say about that as well.
Sure. The original number that we got two and a half years ago from Stockwell Engineering that to set the discussion was about 900,000. And then we started working with Mammoth, and I just want to be clear, we didn't bid anything with Mammoth. It was, they were estimates, just want to make sure everybody knows that we weren't just ignoring a bid that we got. And the estimates from Mammoth came down a little bit to that 850, but that 900 number has been since day one when we first started asking, hey, what's a facility like this cost? And then you'll recall that we had put $700,000 into the budget in 2022, I believe, for implementation of the master park and rec plan. We just put a lump sum in there because we didn't really know what was going to come out of that plan and maybe there's some low hanging fruit. The plan took a while for completion. Dusty came on board, he looked at the budget, pickleball's raring to go. You all said, hey, we don't want to wait for the master plan to be completed to tackle this project. And then Dusty took a look, look at the numbers, all right, we're between that 850 and 900, we can cover half. And whatever the communications with pickleball after that, I wasn't, I wasn't part of them. But even recently, you know, when we had the work session where we talked about pickleball, we've talked about the number, we've talked about 450, but we've also talked about it in relationship to half of the project because at that time, before we knew the information about doing just a normal bid for it, the association was concerned that they weren't going to be able to raise their half or their full commitment, which is why we had the work session where we discovered, hey, we could probably get this thing for a lot less money if we put it out to bid. And thankfully, we did. I mean, this is a great win for the community, you know? 527,000, when we were planning for 850 to 900, that's a, that's a big win. And we can do some of these extras and we've got some additional dollars to put towards other park and rec things that we need to tackle. So I, I mean, I'd look at it as a real win, but that is, that's actually where those dollars came from. We put 700,000 in the budget because we knew we needed to do something with it and we said, hey, we're going to take some of that and put it towards pickleball.
Director Roddick, anything to add?
Nope, that's appropriate.
Councilman Beeler, the floor is still yours?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. I don't want to preempt Councilman Shuddy or Jurens, but I would like to say my piece, which is, as far as the naming rights, I think, I don't think what my understanding is, is any different than Mr. O'Neil's or anybody else that I've talked with pickleball, which is, you know, they want some recognition. If a donor wants to name a court, I have, I have no problem with anything that I've heard in regards to the demands of the, because they're not really demands, it's just what the Pickleball Association would like, which is a little recognition, and I don't think that's out of hand at all. I think it's, we're probably picturing more of a donor wall. There's definitely not going to be a problem with that. In fact, we like those things because it shows community involvement and participation in making our city better. So that's a fantastic win. As far as the facility and the add-ons, I am also of the opinion that if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Let's make it, let's make it the facility that we need it to be to accomplish what we wanted to accomplish for the city, which is hosting tournaments, which is making it a nice thing. Now, how we get there, I'm probably more, I'm definitely more along the lines of Councilman Danforth, which is figuring out some sort of a cost share because I can go back, I've saved every email that I've ever gotten on pickleball, and I do remember, like, way early on when I, because I was, I was involved early in the pickleball discussion as was Councilman Danforth. A lot of people, the pickleball people and you and I are still around, but a lot of the other people were not, because I know Director Roddick wasn't there at the time, but originally it was, they were asking, how do we get this done? And I said, well, both Councilman Beeler and I said, well, a really good way of doing that was promise to raise some money because that really kickstarts the city's willingness to come in and help get it done. And originally, the ask from the Pickleball Association was for the city to provide the land, which we did, because I remember that was a big conversation as, whereas, where do we put it? Because we did, we did look at Nelson Park, we looked out at the softball complex, the premier softball complex. And the desire, I think largely by everyone, but definitely I remember the Pickleball Association really wanted it up at, by the Wellness Center. And so we found that location and got the land for that. And I do remember that the association said that they would raise the funds for it, but then I also recall, and City Manager Mac, Mr. O'Neil, Director Roddick, Councilman Beeler, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the thought process was, the association was originally going to try to raise the money for the entire facility, the city was going to provide the land. But there was also a very strong desire to get it done fast. We didn't want to wait, we didn't want to wait three, four years to raise $900,000, which is one of the reasons why the city got involved and said, okay, to make this happen, on, to expedite the process of constructing it, we would set up to $450,000 to try to make it happen faster. So that was something that we added on and I don't, and I have absolutely no problem with, with us doing that. I think that was the right decision. I think it's the right decision now. And by the way, I am in complete approval of approving this bid award, and I think the entire council will be as well. I think what we're talking about more is what do we, what do we want as far as the add-ons? I will say, I want the add-ons. I would be, I would be more than happy to basically stub out electrical, get the lighting figured out at some point in the future, but I would also like to know what the cost would be for the lighting. But at the very least, I think, as long as you're going to be digging up the ground, I don't know if we're going to have to, question for anybody, are we going to have to dig up like the entryway into the Wellness Center? Dig up the road?
No.
Okay. Okay, because I was just curious with that, but as long as you're, as long as you're digging and moving earth and all that stuff, you might as well put in the stuff that you know you're going to need sometime in the future. So I would be in favor of that. How we get to that, I would like at least some sort of a cost share, but I am okay with the city at least maintaining, let's say, a 60% cost burden of that. But I'm open to negotiation on that. So I definitely want to approve this bid award tonight. I also think that it is in the best interest of the city to make it the facility that we can be proud of. And I also agree with Councilman Danforth, we're going to end up doing it anyway sometime in the future. So as long as we're doing it, we might as well find a way to do it right now. And I think the Pickleball Association would be all in favor of finding a way to do it now as well. So that's my piece on it. Also a little history lesson, but I will also say that while I was involved early on in the process, I got out of it once Director Roddick came in, also a lot of respect for the staffing and things like that. But Councilman Shuddy, you have something to say?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Yeah, basically, I appreciate the discussion, the work on the Pickleball Association, the city, cities involvement here as well. I was more quiet on this one, just listening, because I know that there was, there's some good input that everybody added to this, which really made it, I think, quite clear and hopefully all are in agreement in the direction we're going to go. It would appear to me that we do want to do it right. We want to add, I'm for adding the windscreen, the water stubbing in, you know, the electrical, seeing where the bids come in at lighting, absolutely, let's get some of these things. It's, it's great that we've got some, some numbers to work with versus the other, other way around. So anyway, that's, yeah, I appreciate everybody's input to hopefully get us, get this finished and moving forward.
If I may say one thing, I'd like to say a word of thanks. I really don't know the individual referred to as Director Roddick, but I do know Dusty and he's been a big help and advocate for the association and pickleball in Watertown. So I'd like to put it on the record that he's been a very good friend to the association and we appreciate all he's done.
Good. Thank you for that, Mr. O'Neil. Councilman Tupper?
Just one comment, and, and we've seen this a lot in the last 10, 20 years in the city of Watertown and it, it just goes to show you what a community can get done when you look at public-private partnerships and things. And I'd like to thank, thank all the people on the Pickleball Association for their hard work and dedication they put in. It's exciting in Watertown to see the things we're being able to accomplish that way and, and it's just great to see the public-private entities get together and work together and get some things done.
Thank you. Council, don't want to stop any discussion or questions, but I would like to ask if everyone would be okay. We have a motion to approve the bid award, but I would also like to ask council if everyone is in favor or if the majority is in favor of directing staff to work with the Pickleball Association to come up with a more formal agreement to figure out, not only to finalize this deal, but also to get the things that we want to get accomplished. I think that there is definitely the desire among the council to put these add-ons in, if not completely, then to at least make them possible to add-on in the future with the electrical, with the water. I don't think anyone is in, is in opposition to that. But I would say we can approve this tonight and then if council is amenable to this, we can direct staff to continue working with the association to come up with a plan that solves the further issues of getting this done. Councilman, Councilman Danforth?
Documented.
Yeah, documented plan, something, because we do need this, we need this not just for this, for this facility, but we need this for all future facilities. We need this, we need proper documentation, we need this nailed down because otherwise we do create possible problems. I see our finance officer trying not to laugh. But no, it's, this is, this is just to protect not only the city, but the association as well. I mean, because we don't want to put unfair burdens on, good fences make great neighbors, as Robert Frost said. So if you make clear where your lines are, everyone can, can stay within that. Councilman Tupper? within that. Councilman Tupper?
So Mayor, we're going to vote on this, that's in front of us tonight. Do we need to amend the motion to?
No, we don't need to amend it. We can just approve this tonight, as long as counsel is, is, is in agreement that that's what we would like to direct staff to accomplish.
Okay. That was my only question, because I would have made that amendment.
Councilman Danforth?
You don't think outside of that. And again, it's separate, but to direct staff on the formalization of it, but also
On the naming rights?
To do the evaluation of these other items and get costs that's been some plans related to that, so that we can revisit that.
Definitely.
Okay.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we're going to have to look at this in short order. And one of the reasons I say that is because if they're going to start doing dirt work, they're going to have to do it with those provisions in place. So we have to make sure that we have made a decision to put those things in place so that they can get that taken care of. You know, we're hoping to get this thing done as soon as possible. And so if that's a special meeting, I know none of us really like to have to do that. But I think that's something we may want to consider. Thank you.
And Councilman Beeler, I'd be in favor of that. I, I do, I do know that time is of the essence, because if we're going to start the construction, just knowing what the finished product is going to be, is probably going to be better for everyone involved. So, might be a little fast, but I have trust in Director Rodick, or Dusty, as he was called. Councilman Danforth?
Well, because really, we got two, two issues in front of us. We've got accepting the current bid. But then we also have the, the whole scenario of, of the project and what was originally planned budget-wise, okay? Can we approve the bid, accept the bid, but then give staff the authorization to do their, their evaluation and prioritization, and the freedom to then use up to that 450 at that ratio we talked about, something to that, with the pickleball association, what their number they thought they had to have in our 450. Can we authorize them to work to that budget, budget amount and prioritize so we don't have to come back to a meeting?
I think we could, but I will also ask City Manager Mack about that. I don't, I, we definitely, in my opinion, we definitely could change the motion to add-on, to say that we could pre-approve up to a certain amount. But City Manager Mack?
Well, the procurement policy actually would guide this. So the, the manager or their designees can initiate change orders up to, I want to say, the procurement policy says $200,000. So anything above that, if the change order for these things was going to be more than that, we'd have to bring it back to you anyway. If not, we can manage that administratively. What we might want to bring back to you all is, and we'll, Dusty and I'll take a look at the donor recognition and the naming rights policy, and just get clear on what it is that they're wanting from that. But if the proposed additions, you know, if the estimates or the bids are less than 200,000, we could just administratively do that, because it's within budget. It's within the budget that was approved.
Those, what we're, what we're calling add-ons would fall within the procurement policy. City Engineer Peterson got some estimates, and we would be well with, well under those limits.
Councilman Danforth?
The list included lights.
It included stubbing in the electric.
Right. And I'm saying, we should know what lights cost.
Sure.
Is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that.
And whether that's two courts, four courts, eight courts, whatever.
Yep. We can generate a cost for that.
Yeah. I'm just trying to find a way to, to, to be expeditious in this. But I will say, as soon as y'all get your, your plan and, and estimates in, soon as you're ready, I'm willing to come in here and have a special session to, to deal with it.
Yeah. City Manager Mack?
I, I think just because the conversation has been out and open, we've got some clear direction. And if there is a need for a special meeting, if something comes in where we, where we need to do that, we will let the mayor know, and we can call one. Otherwise, we'll just proceed accordingly and process it appropriately. I think Director Von Nye has a comment.
Director Von Nye?
Thank you. I was only going to point out, if, if any component that we add to this project exceeds $100,000, we'd have to go through the proper bidding process, if it's not otherwise change ordered into the current contract. So we, in engineering and the whole team, finance, legal, Dusty, partner, we'll all make sure we're following the statutory requirements for procurement. But it's likely would either have to be bid or change ordered into this current contract because of exceeding the bid limits.
Councilman Beeler?
No.
Okay. So, trying to understand, I don't see where we need to amend the motion right now. So I'm going to stick with the original motion. I would encourage staff to alert counsel, because I know that you'll be in conversations with the pickleball association regarding the additions. I would encourage counsel to be made aware of the costs. Just a second.
One more question.
Because I know, I do suspect that they will be well within a cost that is acceptable to us. But in case they are not, I think that the council would like to know that. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Rodick, what, what do we anticipate the start of this project to be?
I haven't spoke directly with the contractor, but I have heard through our engineering department, he's already calling, wondering when he can start. So I would anticipate, you know, depending on weather and everything else, very soon.
Thank you.
All right. We will stick with the original motion, which is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item B, an approval of a bid award for the 2024 Park and Recreation Fence Improvements to LT Companies Incorporated in the amount of $156,000 roughly. We'll go to Director Von Nye, City Manager Mack?
I would actually call, I'd actually call Director Rodick back up if he would like to discuss this item as well. The, the only crossover here is why Public Works is involved, just for the council's knowledge, is engineering helps manage these construction projects and the bidding process for the park and rec department. So Justin's been working very closely with Director Rodick on these tasks, but they really do fall under the wheelhouse of Director Rodick. So I'd rather him speak to them more eloquently than I could. So, thank you.
I didn't bring the bid tab with me, but I can just speak to the purpose of this. This was placed in the budget specifically to address our aging sports field fences, you know, many of those. There's a high, high amount of use at Cook Complex, as well as foundation fields. So that's primarily where these dollars are being spent.
Thank you very much. Anything to precede the discussion, Director? Either Director? Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Beeler, second by Councilman Danforth. Counsel, any discussion? Councilman Beeler, anything?
It's funny you should pick on me. No, I, I just, I'll just say, I think that this is overdue. I think we've needed to do this for quite some time. They've been in disrepair, and this will be a, a great thing for the city. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item C is an approval of an agreement for transportation alternative funding with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for the Lake Compeska Bike Trail Segment Two, Project 2421. Director Von Nye?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I can't speak at length to this one, because the engineering division of Public Works has been helping run these, these phases of rec trail improvements in and around Lake Compeska area. And this is, if you recall, we've applied recently for grant funding for the last segment that the city has to construct, which is known as Phase Two or Segment Two of our map to complete the stretch around Lake Compeska. I'm sharing a map here to teams. And so this blue Fa, blue Phase Two here on the south end is what this action tonight is regarding. We've been awarded that grant that we applied for, and what's before the council tonight is the formal agreement and the terms of that grant award. In the background of the agenda item, it talks about the details of the grant. It's an 80/20 split between the state and city funds. The total estimated cost for the project's about $520,000, leaving the state share a little over 400, and the city share a little over 100,000. With that, I would stand by for any questions. I will add quickly, the, the anticipated construction for this would be in 2026. So barring any delays or any unforeseen need to delay that, that's the timeline that the state and the city would be working towards through the design, bidding, and getting it out to construct.
Thank you, Director. May I have a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Jurens, second by Councilman Tupper. Any comments? Councilman Tupper?
So Director Von Nye, this will, you correct me if I'm wrong, this will complete the trail completely around the lake?
For the city's portion, yes. You'll notice on this map, if, if it's pulled up there, the green hash portion is a segment that the state will design, bid, and construct on their own, because it's through the state property. That, they are also hoping to have done in, in conjunction with our Phase Two. I don't know if it will be in a complete sync with our timeline, but I think that's the, the goal or the intent of the state is to get theirs designed and plugged in and constructed at the same time as our Phase Two. So that's the long answer. Short answer is yes, the city's portion will be complete with this.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Jurens?
I don't have any questions. I can't vote fast enough on this one. This, for those out there that have been waiting for this, who have jogged around, have done the 5Ks, the 10Ks, the walks, the, the bikes, they have been asking about this section. It's the most, one of the most dangerous sections to get down. And it brings back a little memory of neighbor kids following me to Memorial Park on a bike, and I'm putting up my arms, and here comes a camper down the road, or a semi, or a piece of farm equipment. So this is safety, this is more than safety, though. This is people looking to come to Watertown. This is companies looking at expanding. This is companies that are recruiting people. This is companies, this is the hospital recruiting professionals. This is a lot that, that, that this is doing for our city, even for those that may not have ever used it or will not ever use it. There's a lot into this. So onward.
All right. Any further discussion? Officer Bobzine, given that he said that he could not vote fast enough, you have my permission to call Councilman Jurens's name first.
Okay, here we go. Jurens?
Aye.
Okay. Danforth?
I'm not going to vote now. My, I've waited weeks for this. Yes, aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item D is an approval of a professional services agreement for environmental review survey and design services associated with the private hangar project with Helms and Associates Corporation in the amount of roughly $49,000. Director Von Nye?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this, this project's an initiative that's been brought forward mainly based on the demand for private hangar space out at our airport. We've had a number of airplane owners, operators with interest in building their own private hangars. To do so, as most of councils, I'm sure, are aware that we do offer land lease options to private individuals, the general aviation sector, where we enter into a land lease with them. And they're then able to build their own private hangar structure to store their, their airplane in. So there's, there's three primary locations right now for three additional hangars that are kind of what we would call low-hanging fruit. And they'd be to the north of the existing private hangar areas out there on the airport. It's kind of in the vicinity of the new snow removal equipment building in that location. And the, that private hangar interest has led us, the staff and the airport board, into a series of events that we have to go through in order to make these sites buildable, one of which is the design of the area. And that's what this contract is for with Helms, to do the survey, the grading design, the taxi lane extension design. We have some ancillary site improvements need to occur, like fence relocation and things like that. Coincidentally, in tandem with this, we have a variance request going before the Board of Adjustments later this week for a setback variance because of the excessively wide right-of-way in Lear Avenue that would be abutting these hangar expansion areas. That's an 80-foot ride wide away, normally those would only be 66 feet. That's just a little precursor information for you all, as that gets ready for the Board of Adjustment later this week. But this action before you tonight is essentially just the Helms contract. It gets them on board with all the design and environmental reporting that we need to perform. I would also note that this cost would be eligible for reimbursement under the 90% federal, 5% state, 5% city cost share. So what we will do is make sure that Helms is operating under all the, all the necessary contracts, agreements, procedures, in order to make sure that this roughly $50,000 expense gets reimbursed at that 90-5-5 split later on down the road. That likely wouldn't happen until early next year, when all this work, design work is complete, and we're able to plug into the cycle for the grant reimbursement eligibility, which comes on later this year. So we're going a little bit out on a limb here with these costs, but that too is okay, because we've got professional services budgeted in the fiscal year '24 airport budget. So we can cover these costs fully, with the expectation to get them reimbursed early next year. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion to approve the, approve the agreement, sorry? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Jurens. Open it up for discussion. Counsel, anything? All right. Since there's no commentary, I'm just going to do a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to item 11A, an application for a special event malt beverage retailer's license and special event retail wine license to Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce for cooking on Compeska on Thursday, July 18th. Officer Bobzine?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing really to add. As stated, a special event license for cooking on Compeska, notice has been published and fees have been paid. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. I will open up a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Do I have a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Beeler. Any comments or questions? Again, no commentary, so I will just go to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11B is a second reading of an ordinance 40, 24-04, a zoning text amendment to Chapter 25.06, locations and special use provisions for medical cannabis establishments for fencing requirements of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. Director Von Nye or Community Development Manager Hampton, which one of you would like to take it?
If I could, Mayor, I'd pass that directly over to Community Development Manager Hampton.
Thank you, Director Von Nye and counsel. So this is the second reading for this ordinance amendment that is dealing with Title 2506 for the medical cannabis uses of the, let me pull it up here, maybe, for manufacturing cultivation and testing. This does not include dispensaries, but this is going to align the ordinance with the state's administrative rule for fences, because there is the security component that is required for these types of uses. So this would now allow one of these uses for cultivation, testing, and manufacturing to exist without the requirement of fencing the entire property. And it would fall in line then with the state administrative rule. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I will open up a public, public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? Please come on forward.
Thanks, counsel. Good evening. Bob West, RBCXGLC, working on starting a cultivation of our own here in Watertown. As Community Development Manager Hampton just said, we're pretty much just looking to make the ordinance consistent with state administrative rules. The state rules do call for fencing to obscure the view for outdoor production of cannabis. What we're looking at is an indoor cultivation facility where every room, every grow room inside the facility is locked. It's monitored, it's alarmed, along with the entire, the building itself and the exterior perimeter is all secured, monitored and alarmed according to state administrative rules. So we don't believe this is anything, we don't believe the fence really adds any extra security. We just kind of feel it was maybe just an unnecessary addition to the, to the ordinance initially.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for counsel action. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Discussion, counsel. Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the biggest thing is I have a question. In the recital that we got for the, it states on here, where did it go? Okay, so it's like the next to the last paragraph. It said, "City staff research confirms that other municipalities such as City of Brookings require such uses to operate inside a completely enclosed building." Is that, that context within our ordinance as well? Or could things be occurring outside that require this screening? I mean, can I like have an acre of plants outside and a fence that has a screen on it? Does our ordinance currently allow that? Or are we, like it's stated here that Brookings is, all those items are, are enclosed?
Manager Hampton?
Yes, so that just was providing additional background of the research that went into this ordinance amendment proposal. So what that's saying is if there are outdoor and what administrative, what the administrative rule now states, that was not available when we first implemented our ordinance for the medical cannabis uses. So the, if there are outdoor operations happening, they do have to have fencing and security still. If, even if there's a greenhouse. So unless everything is not inside the completely enclosed security, meeting the security needs of the state and the building, then they would need that fence.
My question is, what does our ordinance allow? Do they have to be inside a structure like Brookings offers? Or can they be external from the main building? What does our ordinance say?
Today, our ordinance, it, you can have stuff, you can have operations outside, but even if you're, all of your operations are happening inside a building, you would still have to have a fence. So that's where, if everything is inside a completely enclosed building, that's where we're making the, the proposed amendment so that you would not have to fence in the entire I-1 light industrial property, which is 30,000 square feet. And just because the security measures are taken care of.
Okay. It's a separate issue, the whole fencing, I did understand that. I was always under the assumption that it was all internal. That's what I thought our ordinance required. But is that something that, on a side note, that we should at least have discussion about our consideration? Or are we good with where it's at? Separate issue, but I, that kind of threw me when I read that because then my assumption was we aren't requiring that. So, separate issue from the fence issue.
Attorney Carrico, do you have anything to add? Okay.
No, you're correct. They could have outside or inside. If they have outside, they would have to have the fence in line with the administrative rule. And then if they're inside, totally enclosed, then they don't have to have the fence. So, but yes, that would be a discussion for another day during a work session. Thank you.
All right.
So, sorry for actually like misleading, I think. Because if you see here, it says like all manufacturing operations shall be within a completely enclosed structure on a permanent foundation. So we do, so we are even more strict. Now, the administrative rule does allow for operations, like the state's rule allows for operations to happen outdoors. But yeah, our ordinance does not anyway. For, for any of those.
That's what I thought it was. At least the birds are safe.
Title 20, this is title 25, guys. I'm usually in 24 and 21.
All right. Any other counsel discussion? All right, hearing none, let's go to a vote. Officer Bob Zine, if you're in favor of this ordinance amendment, a zoning text amendment to the chapter, please say aye. If you're opposed, say nay.
Okay. Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item 11C, a second reading of an ordinance amending section 2.0118.2 regarding special alcoholic beverage licenses in conjunction with special events. City Manager Mc.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll recall from our last meeting, this is a minor modification, really to allow for an applicant to take out one license for an entire series of events. So we're increasing it to 13 events, largely to accommodate the Thursday Night Live activities that happen. I'll stand by for any questions, but it's a very minor update.
Anything else to add? Anyone else? All right. This is in the public hearing section. I don't see where one is required, but I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is anyone here who would like to testify on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open it up for counsel action. Can I get a motion to approve the ordinance? Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Jurens. Let's open it up for discussion. Counsel. All right. Hearing no discussion, we're just gonna go to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving this ordinance amendment, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12A is an application for a weekly seasonal event on sale license to the Shamrocks and Edelweiss Corporation, doing business as Dempsey's Brewery Pub and Restaurant, and for the duration of the 2024 Thursday Night Live season. Officer Bob Zine?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, so this one does, normally we wouldn't even see it. It would just kind of fall into consent because Dempsey's has their own license. But because we needed to get that ordinance in place, it fell after that. So this will be our first application that encompasses that whole Thursday Night Live window or season. So everything's been published, notices, everything's paid. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Discussion, counsel. Hearing none, we'll go straight to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12B, authorization for the police department to hire a plus-one patrol officer. Chief Toomey?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Thanks for having us today. I prepared a brief presentation for this topic as I anticipated some questions. In this presentation, you will not hear the word pickle one time, so. Pardon me? No ball. Nope, we don't, we don't need lights. But we are requesting to continue on with our plus-one officer for the, for this 2024 year. So if you recall, back in January of 2023, the council did approve us to go to plus-one. We were replacing deployed, deployed soldier and we were trying to fill it with temporary officers. What that meant was they were full-time, but they wouldn't get benefits. So it was really hard to recruit somebody to come and, and work for us. So you guys did approve us to go to plus-one. It's a full-time, fully benefited officer with some caveats. So that, that brought us to 41 sworn officers. We typically have a budgetary authorization for 40 sworn officers. This brought us to 41. Unfortunately, two of our candidates didn't make it through the training program and we had to release them. And also we have a officer that is leaving to go to Nebraska to follow his fiancee, who is a pharmacist. So that will leave us three short. So we're requesting that you approve again for us to go to the plus-one because we had the agreement with you that we wouldn't hire if we lost, if we went back to 40. We were at 40 for a short period of time. So just a little bit of data to help make your decision is the FBI UCR report shows that for Midwest agencies such as ours, they suggest a 2.2 officers per 1,000 citizens. The IACP says two officers per 1,000 for a population of 10,000 to 25,000. If you recall, back in 2020, we were at 37 sworn officers and we received a cops grant, which you approved, that provided us with three officers that were paid for partially for four years. And that brought us to that 40 sworn, which is about 1.7 officers per 23,000 citizens. So that's where we sit today if we are fully staffed. So the big thing, the big problem that we have for our operational, operational readiness is staying in front of that attrition rate. Retirements, resignations, people, people are moving. So we're trying to stay ahead of that turnover rate. In the last five years, we had about 3.8 officers leaving per year. We've had a total of 19 officers leave for some reason in the last five years, which equates to 3.8 officers a year. I look back and that's about, pretty average for the last 10 to 20 years is about 3.4 to 3.8 officers that we're short every year. So how does our command structure follow it down? Here is what we have currently and how they're assigned. And please stop me if you have any questions. But we have a chief, assistant chief, three captains, four patrol sergeants, four corporals, 16 patrol officers, one detective sergeant, four detectives, one administrative sergeant, one community engagement sergeant, a community service officer, two school resource officers and one mental health officer. So what's our schedule like? We work on what's called a pitman schedule. So in order to retain officers, we needed to find a better way to schedule our officers. Back when all three of us started, we would probably have Tuesday and Wednesday off and never see a weekend off. So we, the national trend is now going to this pitman schedule, which is a 12-hour rotating shift where it allows for every officer to have every other weekend off. It fits well. They work 20, they work 2,080 hours for a two-week schedule and have to take typically four hours off called a cops day. When we were factoring in National Guard deployments, court appearances and all that, it is common for us to have three officers plus one supervisor on a shift. So on a Saturday night, four officers protecting the town of Watertown, 23,000 people. We do have a minimum staffing of four officers. That, that's my doing. I think it's unsafe to go any further than that. I think that's even unsafe, but that's what we have to work for, work with. If you think about a domestic call, domestic violence call, that takes a minimum of two officers. So if you have two of those calls in one night, y'all four-year officers are busy. So then that means that we're not responding to calls. We're prioritizing them and that gets frustrating for our citizens that we're not getting right out to whatever issue is at hand. So when we look at high activity times, it's difficult to say, it, it might be easy from the outside looking in to say, well, why aren't you just assigning more officers to the high activity times? Well, in policing, there is no high activity time. Something could break loose at 4:00 in the morning on a Sunday. You just, you just never know. Plus, we're under contractual agreements with the unions on, on scheduling. So the, the pitman schedule works really well and that, that seems to be the best way to accomplish our schedule. Please jump in if I miss anything. That's why these guys are here, just to keep me in, in check because I forget about things because I'm so excited about it. So policing has really changed since I became an officer and just recently, I'd say in the last five years, it really has changed where community engagement is really, really, really important. As we see the national stories out there really putting, giving policing a black eye. So building that trust and confidence in, in your public is by community engagement. It's by doing those positive activities. It's about problem solving. It's about working with the community to identify what's going on in your city and then working together to solve those problems. So this, in 2023, the Watertown Police Department formed the Community Engagement Division under the command of Captain Rehorse here, and it has been a game changer. It really has. We have never been more connected with the community than we are currently. Training onboarding, and that's why Steve is here. It takes an enormous amount of training, as you know, to become a police officer. It's a minimum of 26 weeks unless you come to us with a certification or reciprocity. And then how, how many weeks is it, Steve?
So currently, the way our training program's set up is it's anywhere from 18 to 26 weeks internally, depending on the progress that they're making throughout the program. In addition to that, if they're not currently certified, they have to go to the State Academy for an additional 13 weeks, which if you add that up, the training goes anywhere from 31 to 39 weeks where that officer is with a training officer at the State Academy where they cannot be doing anything on their own. So they're not really able to go take any calls or do anything. In addition to that time, during that 18 to 26 weeks, they're with a training officer. So they're focusing on training. They're not necessarily going out there and doing anything extremely proactive because they'll go to a call, they get done with that call, they'll break the call down, go over learning issues with it and then move on, talk about it. And so there's a lot more than, than that going on. So it really does kind of limit what they're able to do during that training time as well.
So what he's saying is we're really down two officers once, because the training officer is focused on training instead of answering calls. Our operational readiness is, is at risk when we're down that short. Across the, the nation, being plus officers, plus one, plus two, plus three, plus four officers is very common because we never get to that level, right? We, it's very rare. I think 2017 was the first year in 20 years that we didn't lose an officer. So really, I'd like 3.8 officers, if you can find me that 0.8 person that does a joke. Yeah, tough room, tough crowd. Our, our community is growing by looking at the census. So I mean, we grew to 1,000 people in, what, in two years? The population is being more diverse and there's a lot more demand for police services. If you had a chance to look at our year-end report for 2023, a lot of crime is up. A lot of crime is down, but a lot of the violent crime is up. So it's taking more officers, when you have a gun call or a violent call, that's taking more officers to deal with that single call. So four officers on the street is hectic. But that plus-one has really helped us keep pace with that and it helps us maintain that standard of service that's expected by our community. So with the additional officer, like I said earlier, community engagement is hugely important and that helps us in that endeavor. So by putting that patrol officer back on the street, that allows our community engagement division to continue with their community policing. And I did meet with Chief Finance Officer Bob Zine and she assured me that this plus-one is already in the budget for 2024 because you had approved that earlier. And then we'll be making a plan for 2025 coming forward to try and make that a permanent spot or work with our city manager and figure out a better way forward so we don't have to keep coming back to ask. It's a strategic move that anticipates and mitigates our future staffing shortfalls and it allows us to distribute our workflow more evenly. And also it will reduce overtime expenses, so it's a financial investment. We won't be paying those guys, burning them out by making them work all the overtime. With that, I will leave it up to you for questions.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion to authorize the plus-one? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for conversation. Councilman Tupper?
Well, I don't know how many you guys have, but I have taken the opportunity to, excuse me, opportunity to do a few ride-alongs over the years. And these guys work 12 hours. They work 12 hours straight, put it that way. There isn't much break time in that twelve hours. And how they, you know, like, thank God, the last couple of times I've been out on, on the ride alongs, it's been kind of boring. That tells us they're actually doing a pretty good job keeping, keeping everybody in line, but I've also been when they're on a dead run. And if you were to ask any citizen of Watertown, how many police officers are out in the street on a Friday and Saturday night? I've never had anybody guess less than eight. And they usually say in that eight to twelve range. The most I've ever gone long on any ride along was where there was five. Typically, it's four officers. They're not taking forty five minute coffee breaks, put it that way. They're, they're on a dead run. They're on a dead run all night long until it finally slows down and that's when they do their paperwork in their car. So you guys do a tremendous job, like the men and women of law enforcement. But I also love to see that community engagement part of it. You guys have grown the community engagement tremendously over the last few years. And I think we see it. And we're going to see the, the fruits of that labor in, in generations coming up. So thank you for your hard work and these guys deserve every, every dollar they make every day, because they don't have people sitting around. And, and you'd be surprised how much, we got a big town. I mean, when you say the town's growing in population, not only population, we keep adding streets. You know, and, and we got a, a big, big street that goes around a big pond of water out west of town. That's probably what patrol around that half hour, forty five minutes? You know, just patrol that once in a day. You know, that's, that takes up a lot of time, so I will be supporting this, so.
Any further conversation, counsel? I'd just like to say, I sometimes don't like presentations like this, because I know how few officers we have on a regular basis and it's not something that I want to share with the people of Watertown, but I would agree with Councilman Tupper that the perception is that there's a lot more out there. And I remember something, Chief, you said years ago that you get comments like, you guys are everywhere. And I remember that comment from a couple of years ago and I like that perception. It just shows that the people that you do have are incredibly quality individuals who are working super hard to do the job. And the part of the job that just astounds me is you never know what you're getting into. You have no idea when you come on for the shift, what is going to happen during that shift. It can be something incredibly serious to, hopefully, it's a quiet shift. But you never know and to show up to work every shift, every day, being willing to do that, I appreciate that very much. I'm going to use Councilman Jerrance's thing and I can't vote fast enough to get you the plus one that you need.
Thank you. Stand by on the Lake Patrol Division that we formed this year, so that should solve some problems out at the lake.
Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, I just got one comment. I thought your point eight joke was really funny.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Somebody else laughed, but I, I did. I tried to hold it back.
I appreciate that.
And I'll echo the other ones. Guys, I appreciate you guys and I've said it years and years ago, if there's one thing that we have to take care of and that's all aspects of public safety, whether that's Watertown Fire Rescue, whether it's you gentlemen and, and the other officers, that's got to be one of the highest things on our priorities. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We're going to go to a vote. Oh, Councilman Tupper?
It's one thing about it, and I know you guys, and it's vice versa. When I talk to the fire department too, you guys don't like to be compared together, but that must be a union thing or something, but. One thing about it, when, when we're all running from danger, if we're running from a fire or running from somebody with a gun or a knife, you people in uniform are running to it. That's what you took the oath to do and, and you guys do a tremendous job, so. It must be a little adrenaline or something that makes you do it, but.
That actually reminds me of something else that, Chief, you said and Captain Rehorse did. I remember talking with you several years ago, and this was back when I was a councilman, long before I was mayor, and the reason why you do community outreach is because you want that perception that if something is going wrong, you want people to run to a police officer, not away from them. And that is something that is very much appreciated in this community and not always shown in other communities across this country. But I remember that conversation, so I do listen. But actually, I will say, I think all of the council listens. I know that we do, because we do value the job that you do. And thank you for that community outreach effort. It is, it is fun. So I'll be seeing you in high heels pretty soon, right?
Yes, I think in about a week and a half, we were in high heels.
I've taught him well, he's good.
Just duct tape them on, it works.
Councilman Tupper?
Commander, are these guys all coming over to get in your closet or what?
All right. Any further comments? Motion to, motion to authorize the plus one. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay, Officer Bob Zine. Do your stuff.
Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item C is an authorization to supplement the Watertown Police Department budget by twenty, roughly twenty five thousand dollars for the purchase of a dash race timing system to support youth and drug abuse prevention programs. Talk about the community engagement, so, but we will go to Chief Toomey.
Yeah, thanks. This is, I'm really excited about this. Dash is near and dear to my heart. We created it back in 2012 and it really has blossomed into a really good drug prevention program to really empower the youth to stay drug free, alcohol free, safe and healthy. So part of Dash is we put on a bunch of different events throughout the year that, that require timing, whether it's a five K or a fun run at the track or, or what it, whatever it is, it requires a timing system. And over the years, we've invested a great deal of dollars into a timing system, but it's getting to be really old. It's over ten, ten years old now. We were actually even going to different cities to time their races to get donations for the Dash program. And every dollar went right back into the program. But we started having failures with our race timing system and, and we got a little bit of a black eye out there, because at one race, the whole system completely failed and we weren't able, we had to do everything with a stopwatch and it's not what they paid for. So there is a program called the Opiate Settlement Program. It's a national settlement from the pharmaceutical companies that give our city dollars for a whole bunch of different reasons, but it's to fight the opioid epidemic, whether it's in prevention or there's a whole list of things that are required to spend this money. It's just not for anything. You have to have a reason to spend the money. And our Dash program fits nicely in that as a prevention program and an education program for the youth. So all as I'm asking for is to use that opioid money to buy this new, new timing system. And it comes at a cost of just about twenty five thousand dollars. We did an extensive amount of research, looked at many different companies. This innovative timing system is top notch. We, we negotiated with them for quite some time and we really believe that this timing system will set us for a future, for, for a long time in the future. You know, for a long time, it was just Ryan and I, Assistant Chief Remmers and I, running the Dash program. Steve has now stepped up and he's gotten ten of our officers also to step up and volunteer for the Dash program and really make that positive impact on our youth. And this, this piece of equipment is, is really important to us to keep that program growing, keep raising funds and keep helping kids. So really would like that supplement. Save the children.
All right. Counsel, can I get a motion to authorize the supplement? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Discussion, counsel.
Free registration for you if you show up.
That's a five K Bueller. That's no forty yard dash, man.
We just had the Dash Around Kapeska Marathon this weekend. It was a huge success. The wind came out of nowhere and really made it a little challenging, but we had ninety five people start the race and ninety five finished it, so.
Chief, the wind wouldn't have bothered me or Bruce.
No. Depends on which direction you're going, I guess.
Any constructive comments, counsel?
No.
Right. All those in favor of approving the authorization of the supplement will say aye, opposed say nay, Officer Bob Zine.
Okay, Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. I am actually going to lead the way. I see our library director, Maria Gruner, back there. I would like to invite you up, because it's been, I'm going to take the opportunity that you're here. I have had about, I will, I don't want to exaggerate, I'll say about five people, actually, I think it's double that, that have asked me, it's like, well, where could I get a, where could I get a kayak in town? Or a bicycle or a ukulele? And every time, I have literally said, go to our library. Maria, would you come up and just, I mean, the library offers so many things beyond books that I don't think that the community hears this enough. So please take this opportunity to share some of the things that the library has. And sorry to put you on the spot, I didn't warn you about this, but I know that you could speak well about it.
I can, I was going to pull up a list.
Oh, make sure the green light's on.
Oh, I was going to pull up a list, but we'll see what I can remember offhand. We started our library of things, I think, about two, three years ago. And since then, it's just kind of exploded. We bought several things, but actually, the community has been really great and they've been donating to it as well. I think the newest things we've added are four tennis rackets that somebody donated to us. Actually, we just got requests, so we're getting two pickleball sets to send out. We got a disc golf set. We've had requests for the kayaks, but we figured getting them out of the building might be a little difficult, so we haven't quite gone that route. But we've got, I think, about sixteen bikes that we've added that you can check out with little trailers if you want to pull kids behind. And the bikes were largely funded by the Watertown Area Community Foundation. They gave us ten thousand dollars to start that. Right now, our most popular item are the zoo passes. We've got, what is it, nine zoo passes that you can check out from the library and it gets in five members of your family, any age. And so those have been going out constantly. Those also, I think, were supplemented by a donation by the Friends of the Library. I think they supplied seven of our passes. We've got any number of musical instruments. We've got a mandolin, we've got ukuleles, we've got bongo drums and steel tongued drums and we're just getting a little keyboard for people to play if they want to take a piano home. We've got an air fryer, we've got all kinds of baking instruments, cook pans, dehydrator. We've got fishing poles, if you want to go out to Lions Park. We've got the taco box to go with it too, some kids backpacks, adult backpacks, if you want to go camping in the state parks. We've got free state park passes you can check out, take there, enter free. Just kind of any number of things. And as always, we're always open to donations if anybody wants to stop and see if there's something we could use.
Along with books.
Along with books, yeah.
And magazines and, and DVDs and CDs. And actually, I will say that I use, I can say, at least five times a week, I use online Libby that the library also provides, which is a wonderful resource for anyone who wants to read on a device or listen to an audiobook.
And kind of a little plug, since it's almost June, the summer reading program starts soon. So we've got it for all ages and even the adults, we're giving away gift certificates to local restaurants. So anyone who'd like to participate, it's open.
Sorry to put you on the spot, I just thought I'd take the opportunity. Thank you for being here, but I also know coming up on the, on the summer, there's a lot that you offer that the community just needs to be constantly reminded of. It's a great resource, so thank you.
Thank you.
Other council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. I actually have another thing. So I am the liaison to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. They finished their strategic planning. They will be coming forward to council to do a presentation upon what we learned. It was actually extremely interesting. They did a very good process and to find out what drives people to Watertown, what the most important thing is to visitors and what can add on value to keep them here longer. So I thought it would be a good idea for them to come forward to present to council, so I'll have that pretty soon. This Wednesday, out at the Goss Pavilion, not the Goss Pavilion, the Redland Pavilion, Wednesday at noon, they are having their award banquet. So you're welcome to go there. That's always a good thing for Watertown. I will also say Watertown Development Company also recently finished their strategic planning session. I know City Manager Mack and myself were there and that was a two day process and lots of good discussion upon the future of Watertown Development Company. And then also, I know Councilman Jerrance was there as well a couple of weeks ago, being caught up a little bit, but the Lake Kapeska Board had their annual meeting. And Councilman Jerrance, myself, Community Development Manager Hanton was there and I think Engineer Peterson was also there. Was I missing anything, anyone from the city? But I will say, this went really well. The, the board was appreciative of what the city has been doing. Obviously, very, very aware and very concerned about the future of the lake and what is going to happen with the core of engineers, but I know that that is going to be an ongoing process. But I just wanted to say that the city was well represented out at that board and we continue to foster that relationship, which is very important to the lake and to the community in general. That's all I had, but that's more than what I usually have. Anyone else has anything? Councilman Tupper, you want to give us an update on fireworks?
They go up in the air. Especially, they work good at night. I'm working along on the fireworks donations. There's a lot of great community people that are going to help me raise that forty thousand dollars so we can have a big fireworks display on the fourth. The City Manager Mack has agreed to sing the National Anthem for me. What's that? Yes, you have, so Mr. Bueller did it last year. Oh, what do you mean, you didn't? She's got some big shoes to fill after last year, but. Can't do without all the city departments also, but it's a great time in the community. We have a lot of fun. I got to lean on everybody, so I'll be out knocking on your door. I've already knocked on a few, so, but I don't get told no very often. And I'm a little, like a little kid in candy store when it comes to fireworks, so we'll have a lot of fun that day, so.
Thank you, Councilman Tupper. Thank you for heading that up. I appreciate it, as does the city of Watertown. City Manager Mack, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have several items to continue with your list. I also sat through a visioning session with the Friends of the Goss late last week as they're looking at things that they could be doing. It must be the season of strategic planning. But I did want to put a plug in out to the community. The H2O 2050 group has been formed and there are multiple opportunities for the community to be engaged in that process. You can find them on social media. There is a survey out there right now, so if you haven't taken it, please do. We wrapped up Police Week very nicely with a new officer position and a new timing system. But last week was Police Week. We kicked off the week with a ceremony at the PD. The torch run came through Watertown last week. A whole host of other activities that the Police Department did, including coloring with a cop at the high school. It's about two hundred and fifty high school kids, is that right? Which is pretty incredible, so we're really grateful for all of their work on that and for them and, and those that support them. This week kicks off EMS Week. So our emergency medical support staff are being celebrated and we're also kicking off Public Works Week. And so we have a lot of people and projects and things to be thankful for and to celebrate this week. Kicked off Public Works yesterday with touch a truck out at the airport. My kids think that they're too old to do things like that, so my husband and I went and touched all the trucks. It was great. Good turnout for that. I think Heath will probably provide a little more in-depth explanation on what's going on the rest of this week. I would like to recognize Mallory in the back. For those of you that don't know Mallory, she's the executive assistant. It's her birthday today, so happy birthday, Mallory. We have, I did send an email to all of you on Friday at ten o'clock in the morning. We are doing a groundbreaking ceremony for the City Hall project. And then lastly, before I kick it over to Heath, I'd like to recognize Angie. And then lastly, before I kick it over to Heath, I'd like to recognize Angie Schaefer. Maybe some of you saw our social media post on her. She's one of our 911 communications officers and she recently completed a bachelor's degree. And so we're very proud of her and for all her hard work and dedication and she's a great member of our team. And with that, I think we have another recognition that Heath's going to tell you all about.
Thank you, Manager Mack. Yes, in the Public Works Department, we're always striving for performing our duties in the most highest level of professionalism and excellence for the community of Watertown. Along with that, we always encourage our staff to pursue, whether it's licensure or certifications and things of that nature that help, help make them all the more capable and credentialed to be able to perform those tasks for the community on a top notch level. With that, I just wanted to make a quick announcement about our Community Development Manager, Brandy Hanton. As you know, she's previously served the city for quite a few years as a city planner and a couple of years ago was promoted to the Community Development Manager, who oversees the planning, zoning and building services functions of the Public Works Department. And recently, Brandy, I'd like to announce, has passed her certification exam from the American Institute of Certified Planners. So she is now AICP certified. What that means is that she joins an elite level of urban and regional planners that have gone through a minimal amount of work experience and training and a rigorous exam that they have to pass. And all that together then, of course, helps substantiate her role in the community of Watertown as a community development manager, particularly overseeing the planning and zoning functions for the city. That exam covers a wide variety of certain areas. I'll list a few of them here. Fundamental planning knowledge, understanding the history and theory and principles behind planning, plan making and implementation, meaning how are plans created, how are they evaluated and implemented, what policies do they include? That includes comprehensive planning, strategic planning and capital improvement programs. Spatial areas of practice, the knowledge of land use, transportation, environmental planning, urban design, housing and community development. Ethics and professional practice, understanding the AICP code of ethics and professional conduct. And then laws and research and quantitative methods. So there's a whole myriad of, of elements that are part of that exam that Brandy took part in here a couple of weeks ago on a Friday after, well, it's a good part of a day, I think it's a four hour exam. And she received notification that she passed that. So without no further ado, I would like to congratulate you, Brandy, for that accomplishment. That's an amazing thing and I, to my knowledge, is the first and only AICP certified planner the city Watertown's ever had.
Thank you. I'd just like to throw out an idea. We have a Touch a Truck event. I think we should have a Touch a Public Works Director event.
Feel like that's weird.
Send you to, send you to the elementary schools. Everyone can like pat you on the back.
We've got around the bend.
I think that's the first time I've seen you blush.
That's worth, over.
All right. City Manager, are you done with your report?
I'm done.
All right. We do have a reason to go into executive session for both contractual and employee issues. We will not be taking action when we're done. I do need a motion to go into executive session. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night.